I just did this with the iPad last time. Good evening and welcome to the next in our series of election forums produced by the Long Beach Community Action Partnership with PadNet.TV, your community media center and Long Beach's public access television station. I'm Matt Kaplan and I'm very proud to be back for this opportunity to hear from all four of the registered candidates who hope to represent Long Beach's first council district. We are broadcasting live on Charter, Channel 32, and Verizon Channel 41 in Long Beach and beyond. We're also streaming live at PadNet.TV. Now, we understand that those of you who are watching the stream at PadNet.TV, there may be some synchronization problems between the audio and the video. We apologize for that. We hope that you'll be able to hang in there with us. All of our forums will be available after the fact as video on demand. Additional cable cast times are listed on our elections page at PadNet.TV. Now, as with our mayoral event two weeks ago, we have just one hour for tonight's program, our tonight's forum. No voter can really be expected to be fully informed about either the candidates or the issues in that amount of time, but we do hope that what you hear will help you make your decision when you go to the polls on April 8th and provide you with more of an incentive to learn more. Remember that democracy only works when you and I make it work. The candidates will be introducing themselves in just a moment. First, though, we want to welcome three very distinguished panelists. Each of them will have time to ask two questions this evening. Each candidate will be given one strictly enforced minute to respond. The panelists are Rich Archbold, former managing editor and now public editor of the Long Beach Press Telegram; Michelle Molina, chief executive officer and owner of Peace Partners and a member of the Downtown Long Beach Associates Board of Directors; and Tiffany Ryder, editor of the Long Beach Business Journal. Now, we turn to the candidates for their one-minute opening statements and we'll begin immediately to my left with Lena Gonzalez. Lena?
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, panelists. Thank you, everyone, for being here. My name is Lena Gonzalez. I'm currently the field deputy for vice mayor Robert Garcia. I've served in that capacity over the last five years. I have also been in the private sector for the last 10 years, working at Bank of America and sales and marketing within the shipping supply industry. I'm a mother. I have a 12-year-old son that I raise in downtown. And I also, as I mentioned, have been the field deputy. I know the city, where it's headed. I know the first district very well, and I've actually been endorsed, and the only candidate that's been endorsed, by police and fire departments. So, I'm very excited by that. I hope I can gain your support on April 8th, and I hope that we can continue the progress. Thank you.
Thank you, Lena. Ricardo Linares, you're next up.
Well, thank you, Matt. My name is Ricardo Linares. I am a lifelong first district resident. For the first time in 20 years, we have an opportunity to elect somebody who actually grew up in the district. I've lived in the first district for over 30 years. I've attended school here. This is where I grew up, and now my wife and I are raising our two kids here. I have 20 years of life experience. I've served in the United States Marine Corps for eight years, represented the first district as a city commissioner for four years. I worked at the Conservation Corps of Long Beach, graduated from the Neighborhood Leadership Program, earned my degrees at Long Beach City College and Cal State Long Beach. So, on April 8th, I'm asking for your vote for the first district council member.
Thank you, Ricardo. Our third candidate, third of the four declared and registered candidates this evening, is Pilar Pinel.
Thank you, Matt, and thank you, panelists and guests here tonight. My name is Pilar Pinel, and I have been a resident of the city of Long Beach for 37 years, more recently 10 years in the first district. I was a former first deputy, first district deputy here in the city of Long Beach for council member Loenthal at the time. I've worked both on the nonprofit side, I've worked on the government side. I've had a really diverse professional career, and it led me in a full circle here back into the political platform. I have worked with education and the issues on education and how it's impacting our communities. I've not, I've worked with small businesses, one which should be recognized as women being the thriving force in small business, and bringing business to Long Beach has never been an option for me. I've worked very hard at bringing it forward regardless of my candidacy, and I've worked with the various levels of government. I hope to represent you as your first district representative. Thank you.
Thank you, Pilar. And the fourth of our candidates, the final one, we'll hear an opening statement from tonight, is Misi Tagalua.
Thank you, Matt, honorable panelist, audience. My name is Misi Tagalua, and I've lived in Long Beach for 30 years. I've lived in the first district for 20 years, and I have three kids, and they've all gone through the public school system. I'm a graduate of Cal State Long Beach. I've worked for Farmers and Merchants Trust Company as a trust administrator for seven years, and I'm here asking for your vote April 8th, and I'll be honored to be your representative on the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, all of you candidates, and thank you for doing such a good job of kicking off this forum this evening and staying within our one-minute limit. So, the first of our panelists with a question for you is Rich Archbold of the Long Beach Press Telegram. And Rich, go right ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to talk about downtown redevelopment. What are your plans to revitalize downtown? And in your answer, if you could talk about affordable housing and low-income residents and what redevelopment would do to them, including the homeless, and also, along with that, what are your ideas about this new proposed civic center?
Lena?
Absolutely. Well, we've worked a lot. And the field, as a field deputy, I've worked quite extensively in the downtown area. Unfortunately, the redevelopment agency went away, so we've had to get creative with our funding. We've utilized a lot of our council budget, some of our one-time funding to do pet projects in the downtown area for revitalization in the interim. You know, so that's been, been great. I think that we can continue to do that on a, on a larger level to make sure that we are continuing to fund smaller projects, but also larger projects that connect our corridors. I also believe, you know, working with other council districts to connect our corridors in the downtown area. In addition to that, with low-income housing and affordable housing, we do have a large homeless population that is in the downtown. I just attended a meeting today regarding the downtown area and the homeless at Lincoln Park. I believe there's a lot to do. It's a more of a regional issue. I think the city of Long Beach needs to work with their regional partners, the county, our various cities. I've talked extensively with our housing authority to make sure that we have the funding available to supplement our housing authority vouchers, our Section 8 vouchers.
And Lena, I'm afraid I will have to stop you there, just to stay within our one-minute. Thank you very much. Ricardo Linares, if you would respond?
Yes, and like Lena said, redevelopment was gone last year. It was taken away from, from the cities by the governor. And one thing that I would do is work with the downtown association and the business improvement districts to improve the, the businesses that we have down there. I think one of the things here that we have in the city that I've seen over the last 30 years is I see businesses come and I see businesses leave. We have, we just lost Albertson's, we just lost the Northstone Rag, and I think the city needs to focus more of the, our attention in keeping our businesses here, providing resources that they need so that they can continue thriving. Yes, upland oil funds can be used for pet projects, but we also need to focus the other, our attention to the other areas outside downtown Long Beach. We have storefronts along Anaheim, along Pacific, Pacific Coast Highway that need attention. If we can expand the progress that downtown has achieved, I think that those areas we can, we can match the thriving progress that we have.
Thank you, Ricardo. And we'll move now to Pilar Pinel.
Thank you. I'm going to feed off of both of those because it's exactly what is happening, and I have seen the generational changes through the time of redevelopment up till today and the transformations that have happened down in the downtown area. I agree that there are areas in the first district that need to be included in part of the master plan of building out and bringing in more thriving business storefronts, and the properties are there and the potential is there. I'd like to see that we are doing a stronger force of effort in bringing and attracting small business into the corridors from the Anaheim, Fifth Street above, all the way into Anaheim and Pacific Coast Highway. I, I know that pet projects are important, but we also, I need to feel that we need to reach out to the constituency that lives in the district and to encourage those living in the district to create or bring forward their business proposals. Thank you.
Thank you, Pilar. And lastly, for this question, Misi Tagalua.
Yeah, Matt, to ask someone to comment on all those issues in one minute, it's quite a feat, but, you know, a lot of those problems are very overwhelming. It's a confluence of many things coming together to create affordable issues and also to, to create the homeless situation. So, one of the things that I would do is I would take a closer look at it and maybe look at it from a different perspective than how we're handling it. Some of the existing programs that we have for addressing homeless, for instance, don't do justice. They don't dignify the people that they are. But then, as far as the civic center project, I'm for keeping our employees safe. I think that's paramount and important, but until we figure out how to pay for that, you know, maybe we need to look at it, at a different way of having our city offices, rent existing spaces, or reconfigure the one that we've gotten now. But until then, I will reserve a judgment, my judgment, until I get more data.
Thank you, Misi. And I have no doubt that all of you would have much more to say about this if we have the time to do that. Hopefully, as we said, our audience will follow up on their own. We'll go now to Michelle Molina for the first of her two questions, and Ricardo Linares, this will be going to you as the first to answer. Michelle?
Okay. Live music is a proven economic driver in cities like Austin, Texas. Long Beach has a wealth of talent, but the policies the city has are perceived by some as either too restrictive or too broad. What might you do to work on that disconnect and take advantage of our economic potential?
Well, one thing I can do is, like I said, providing the resources that, that they need. The city right now has a lot of red tape. I mean, if a small business wants to come in or entertainer wants to come in, there's a lot of red tape that they have to go through. So, one of the things that I would like to see is, you know, reducing the red tape for, for many of the entertainers that are coming in or small businesses that are coming in. So, maybe focusing our attention towards that and working with our local talent, I think is, is essential, especially because we're a city that's so diverse. I mean, close to half a million people here. We have different industries, arts, entertainers. We have the Port of Long Beach here. So, we have to make sure that they have a pathway so that they can succeed here in Long Beach.
Thank you, Ricardo. Pilar Pinel, we'll hear from you next.
Thank you. Yeah, I would, I agree that this is, the diversity of Long Beach certainly needs to be more inclusive to opening opportunity. I speak with businesses that are in the district and outside of the district, and one in particular that resonates is he has many offers to lease his building, but getting permits for that company to come in because they may have live music or the noise level, things of that, of that nature. He even had a nonprofit that wanted to come in for teaching youth, and getting through the red tape seems to be a barrier. So, I do not, not having privy of sitting on that particular policy, I would assure you that I would look into it and I would follow through with it because this is, again, a very thriving, robust city. It's grown tremendously, and the, the way we are attracting tourism, we also have to look at expanding other areas of the arts that we offer.
Thank you very much, Pilar. Misi Tagalua?
I think Michelle mentioned it when she said there's a disconnect between city council and the community. One of my pledges as your council member is I pledge to have an open door policy where folks can come in from the community, and I would entertain their issues and address some of their grievances. That's rampant throughout the whole, and that's one of the reasons why I'm running for city council. That's rampant throughout the whole relationship between the community and those that govern the community, and I'd like to change that. So, one of the reasons why, one of the things I would do is I would implement that open door policy where folks can just come in and bring their grievances, and so I can address it right there.
All right. Thank you, Misi. And Lena Gonzalez, you'll get the last word on this one.
Sure. We have so many creative spirits here in the, in the Long Beach area, specifically in the first district. I've represented many of them as a field deputy in the East Artist Village District, as well as the North Pine Neighborhood Association, Historic Old Pine Avenue. There are already, you know, amazing things that are going on. I would love to create an umbrella policy. I'd have to flesh it out, of course, but an umbrella policy in some of these cultural areas that would be able to allow artists and creative spirits and musicians to come and play without the, having to go every single time to city hall to be able to get a permit. You know, it would be great to partner with our neighborhood associations and nonprofits, the Arts Council, to be able to provide that for these cultural hotspot areas, especially in these areas that are thriving, like I mentioned, North Pine and Historic Old Pine Avenue, as well as the East Village Arts District. I think it's time. I think we do need to emulate cities like Austin, Texas, and I would be happy to champion something like that, absolutely.
All right. Thank you, candidates. We're going to go on now to the last of our panelists, hear the question, first of two questions from Tiffany Ryder of the Long Beach Business Journal. And Pilar, this will go to you first.
Thank you. Businesses in the West Side Industrial Area, just west of the 710 freeway, have told the Business Journal that there has been a lack of support from the council office in the first district. This does not include the Magnolia Industrial Group area. Many of these businesses are family-owned and have been in Long Beach for decades. They locate it here due to the area's proximity to the port, not because of the city's business climate, they tell us. So, how familiar are you with the business concerns in the West Side Industrial Area? Businesses in the West Side Industrial Area and their concerns? And as a city council member, how would you work with those businesses in the West Side Industrial Area to incentivize them to continue doing business in Long Beach?
Pilar Pinel?
Thank you. Yes, I'm very familiar with the businesses on that side. Again, I go back 30 years with a lot of these businesses. They are family-owned, and I have heard of their issues, not as a representative of the city. I didn't, that didn't occur until I was a field deputy for council at that time, but their concerns are very legitimate. Whether it's parking, whether it's getting permits, whether it's them wanting to expand or just being included, it's like they're isolated from the rest of the city. What I would do certainly, as I mentioned in my candidacy to run, is to be inclusive to all the district. It's not a particular area, it's an entire district, and to be the voice for the business because I'm a business owner. I started my business from the grassroots, bottom up, and I understand the sacrifices they put forward. So, they may not be a corporate entity, but they're a business and a thriving business, and there's potential for growth, and they need our support. And as a elected official, we are the voice to represent not only the business, but the constituents.
Thank you, Pilar. Misi Tagalua?
Thank you. I've talked to several of those business owners, and they seem to need a little incentive, a little grant, maybe, a low-interest rate loan, so they can go to the next level. A lot of these businesses are property-rich, but they don't have the capital to go get a website and do some other things which, which would bring them to the next level of businesses. So, as a council person, what I would like to do is I'd like to create a platform where these businesses are supported by the city through grants, low-interest rate loans, retooling, because some of those business models need to go, and we need to have the city help our people, keep the jobs here. Thank you.
Thank you, Misi. Lena, I should say, because it may have been caught on camera, you had a little technical adjustment to your microphone there, so I hope that wasn't too disturbing, but Lena Gonzalez, it is now your turn to respond.
As a council member, the West Side Industrial Area would be one of my priorities. I agree that it hasn't, there has been a disconnect, unfortunately. This would be one of my priorities. I have talked to many of our West Side Industrial Business Owners. I want to make sure that their voices are heard, even if they are on the other side of the river. I believe, I agree, I believe that there are incentives that can be given to these folks. They're generational, they're family-owned, they've been there for 20, 30, 40 years. They have investments, there's American-made manufacturing going on, on the West Side. It's incredible. So, we do need to highlight the West Side Industrial Area, just like the Long Beach Business Journal did. I think you did a lovely article. I think we need to, to work, you know, with them a little bit more to see what we can do, also with the port. I think there's potential there to work with the port and have the port incentivize them in, in some capacity. But I agree, I would love to do that. That's one of my projects, that's one of my top priorities in terms of business on, on the council.
And thank you, Lena. Ricardo Linares, you will get the last word on this question.
Well, after I came back from the Marine Corps, I've, became a business owner for about three years. So, I became very familiar with the challenges of running a small business. It's one of the reasons I went back to school and earned my degrees at Long Beach City College and Cal State Long Beach. And I can tell you, you know, growing up in the first district, down there, I would go down there and, you know, as a kid, and just, you know, see, because, play around and, you know, with the, in the area, but, you know, I've walked that district in the last couple of weeks, and there is a disconnect. So, one thing I would do is make sure that we change the council office, bring in somebody new who grew up in the district, who's very familiar with running your own business. And as a field deputy for the last five years, I've worked with small, with the business improvement districts up there in North Long Beach, and building the relationship is very important to me, especially because I want to see those businesses thrive. They create jobs for local residents in the first district, so I want to make sure they succeed so that they can provide jobs for our local residents.
Thank you, Ricardo. Sorry to have to stop you there. All right. It's my turn now to ask a question, and I'm going to do so on behalf of the Long Beach Community Action Partnership, or LB CAP, which is our host here this evening. It's also one of Long Beach's most active and accomplished agencies, working on behalf of the disadvantaged in our community, and here's the question. What is your vision for working with all sectors of the city, including those with low incomes? And we will begin in a moment with a one-minute response from Misi Tagalua. Now, you already got the question from Rich, having to do with the development side of this question, so I'm hoping that you can address the other facets of helping the disadvantaged in Long Beach. Misi?
One of the presuppositions that's prevalent in dealing with the disadvantaged is that they don't have any resources. What we need to do, and what I propose to do, is change that a little bit, so, so that way we can take what they have and have it so that we can value that. For instance, there's about 3,000 homeless folks in disadvantaged communities. All of them have a check. They get general relief, at least, some of them Social Security, and in some cases, veteran benefits, which average about $1,800. So, if you multiply that out, that's a huge number. The Section 8 vouchers, subsidizing some of the landlord bills. So, my point in saying this is we really need a fresh pair of eyes to look at some of the problems that are plaguing our community and see if we can not come up with better solutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Misi. Lena Gonzalez?
Sure. As I mentioned before, I really do believe, in terms of the homeless, it is a regional issue. I don't think it's just Long Beach's issue. We need to speak with our county partners, partners in, and around adjacent cities. I do believe that there may be opportunities for grant funding or for pilot programs. You know, we are down to a very small veteran homeless population, which I think is incredible. I also believe that, you know, I currently, as that field deputy, as I mentioned, I, I've been working with folks that don't have anything. I just got a call about a couple of weeks ago from a mother who was living in her van with six children. There are resources available. I think it needs to be a collaborative effort amongst all of the faith-based organizations, amongst, you know, our nonprofit partners. We have to continue that, and we have to all come together to make sure that there's a plan in place, so.
Thank you, Lena. Ricardo Linares?
That is one of the reasons why I'm running for the first district. I've lived there for 30 years, and you're right, this, this community is, needs the resources for all areas, not just the homeless, affordable housing, but, you know, better air quality, you know. The first district right now has a 16% asthma rate. Anywhere else in the world, that's an epidemic problem, but here in the city of Long Beach, you know, we just push it off to the side. We need a council member who knows the challenges that we've, we face, who knows the opportunities that we need, and that's one, one of the reasons why I'm running for city council, because I want to provide the resources that we need in the first district, not just in one area, but in all areas, not just in one part of, of the first district, but all parts of the first district.
Thank you, Ricardo. Pilar Pinel?
Yes. Can you repeat the question? I apologize.
Sure. I will give it to you exactly. What is your vision for working with all sectors of the city, including those with low incomes?
Thank you. My vision is one that has always been a part of who I am, and that is to reach out to the people. My 37 years here in Long Beach, I've always reached out to the people, and I've been a part of the dynamics and change of the city. It's now one of the largest Latino population cities, in particular this district. It's gone from in 1980, from 35,000, maybe a little bit over that Latinos living in this city, to over 235 today. So, in that growth, I've been part of all that mapping, and I work with every level, whether it's education, whether it's small business. And so, having my pulse on those things brings me to want to be your city councilwoman for the first district, because we are a culmination of all of those things. To start things forward, I don't do things because it's a salary or I'm getting paid to do it, or it's a title. I do it because as a born American here and daughter of immigrants, it's the right thing to do. We need to reach out beyond the borders of what immediately touches us and reach out to others, and that's why I'm running for city council.
Thank you, Pilar. Thank you, all of you candidates. We're going to take a two-minute break now before our first district city council candidates answer another round of questions from our panelists. This is Long Beach Community Action Partnership Election Forum, coming to you live on PadNet.TV. Stay with us.
At the Long Beach Community Action Partnership, we're very proud of the millions of dollars that we provide in utility assistance services, and we're also proud of the thousands of people that we assist, including youth, adults, and seniors. But what we're most proud of are the relationships that we build one-on-one with people just like you to build a stronger community. Join us in changing lives and making a difference.
It's very pet-friendly. Everybody has a dog in Long Beach. It's Dog City.
Well, there's everything to do here. You've got the Pike, you've got Queen Mary, you've got the beaches, you've got paddle boarding, surfing. You go a half a mile that way, you've got surfing, you've got downtown.
I just think it's the most, most incredible, most beautiful, most unique city, which has so much to offer. So, I love it here and I'll never leave.
Welcome back to the Long Beach Community Action Partnership and PadNet Candidate Forum for the first council district in Long Beach. We are live on Charter, Channel 32, and Verizon, Channel 41, in Long Beach and beyond, and streaming at PadNet.TV. In the coming weeks, LB CAP and PadNet will present forums for all of the city council positions that will be decided on April 8th, decided that is unless runoffs are required, of course. We'll cap this series by inviting back the candidates for mayor of Long Beach on April 2nd. All of these forums will be available as video on-demand events at PadNet.TV. They will also be replayed on Charter and Verizon several times before the April 8th election. Now, again, you'll be able to find the videos and the replay dates and times on our election page at PadNet.TV. We're going to return now to Rich Archbold and the second round of questions for our candidates, and we will begin once again with Lena Gonzalez. Each candidate will once again also have just one minute to respond. Rich?
Thank you. I want to talk about the relationship of the Port of Long Beach to city hall. There was a talk the other day by the head of the Maritime Association, who referred to the political drama and theatrics that are, that have been going on, saying enough is enough, that his association members, who make up 70% of the revenue, are tired of city hall meddling and interference. I'd like to know, if you were on the city council, what would your votes be in terms of dealing with the port and these various important relationships? And another part of this is the BNSF railroad lawsuit, and what's your position on that? Whether that lawsuit should continue or should it be dropped?
Lena, sadly, one minute. Lena, sadly, one minute.
Okay, well, I'll try to get through this in one minute. Thank you for the question. So I believe port relations are very important. We're the second-largest port, busiest port, extremely important. A lot of jobs created. I would not have voted to vote off Thomas Fields, to be quite frank with you. I believe that our port relations within the city council and the commission needs to be very strong. And we need to deal with these things internally. That's my belief. As far as ongoing relations, I hope that, as a council member, I can continue those that are really strong and for the betterment of the whole city, so that we don't look bad to our customers overseas. As far as SKIG, I, to be quite honest with you, I'm a little unsettled with that. I'm not sure if I would have voted to continue on with the litigation. I think it's a long, drawn-out process. I think alternatives could have been made. And we could have, you know, certainly discussed things. I think it would have been a lot of jobs to our, our community. But I also understand there's environmental justice issues. That one, I'm not really settled with currently, but I would certainly like to review a little bit more.
Thank you, Lena. Ricardo Linares, it's your turn to answer this very deep question in 60 seconds.
Sure. I'm a strong believer in neighborhood leaders. One of the reasons I joined the Neighborhood Leadership Program in 2004 is to get involved with the, within my community. And that, for the last five years, working with council member Steven Neal, we've helped develop over 100 new neighborhood leaders in North Long Beach, who are involved in the community. So that way, they can become commissioners, active leaders in the community. I would not vote it, would have voted to remove Commissioner Fields. He is a good man. He knows the field very well. And that's why we have the mayor appoint, make recommendations to appoint commissioners, and the city council to approve him. I would not meddle in port of Long Beach business. They have their commissioners, there are the directors, they oversee the port. And, I mean, I can work with the commissioners and the directors over there. But as far as running the port, that's their job. We only set the policies for the city. As far as this gig, there's a lot of concerns from the community regarding that.
And Ricardo, I'm sorry, I will have to stop you there. It's terribly unfair to try and answer a question like this. But all of you are doing a great job with this.
Thank you.
Pilar Pinel, it's your turn.
Thank you. I will second on this, is that the port definitely needs, there needs to be that collaboration between city council and the port. But I agree with what Ricardo has said, that they do have their representation in commissioners, and the port does not need to be handled directly with City Hall, or, not City Hall, City Council. What I do see is that the indifference is really limiting the port from potential that we have to create more business and commerce coming through our ports. With that said, I don't agree that Mr. Fields should have been dismissed or removed, and that in doing these kinds of, trying to iron out these issues, we are, we are falling behind on the potential that other countries are building off of in creating larger and more productive ports. But we do have to make sure that policy is in place, as council, as a city, that we are maintaining a margin of environmental sensitivity.
Thank you, Pilar. Misi Tagalua?
I've hired and let go of people in my 20 years at Second Simone Congregational Church. And I don't know the specific as to why Mr. Fields was let go, but the way he was let go in public like that, I think, you know, needs to be examined. As far as the SKIGS project, we did some work in the community, and, and we discovered that they were measuring the wrong particulates, you know. And, you know, we had scientists look at this and brought it up. And we even examined the environmental impact report, and we, we found it to be wanting. So we wanted to bring that to the attention of our officials. But for some reason, it got lost in the shuffle, and that's why we're in the lawsuit. So I think it'll eventually work out for the best, as long as everyone engages the issues and are cognizant of what is at stake. So thank you, Rich.
All right. Thank you, Misi. Thank you all. There is nothing like a ticking clock to focus the mind, as we're getting another demonstration of this evening. And we will now go to Michelle Molina and Ricardo Linares. You will be the first to answer this question. Michelle?
And I have another arts-related question for you. Mayor Foster had convened a Blue Ribbon Committee to deal with funding issues for arts and culture. According to some of the participants of that committee, the recommendations were either ignored or not followed through with. What might you do to improve local funding of arts programs and projects?
Ricardo?
One thing I would do is, of course, work with the committee to find, to review the applications. I'm not saying get involved with the application process, but making sure that all the applications are reviewed. We have a city with a diverse arts community, and we, we need to make sure that everybody's looked at. One time, oil funds can be used to provide some funding for the arts, especially in the first district. I would love to see more of a working relationship with Cal State Long Beach and Long Beach City College, and maybe provide funding for those students, so that they can, you know, showcase their arts. So that's one of the things that I would do, just work, better, better working relationship with the committee and, and other leaders in that community.
Thank you, Ricardo. Pilar Pinel?
Thank you. Yes, I'm very passionate about the arts. When I started my nonprofit for youth, arts is a big part of it. And in that, we engage in not only in local art projects that were happening, or events that were happening, also with the Long Beach Symphony. With that, I did see that there are students at the, because I have a collaborative with Cal State Long Beach and the Arts Department, and we gave to our time to help support art students. From that fold, bringing it back to the community, is to provide more of a resource, more of an inclusiveness, so they feel engaged. Quite often, what, what is coming back to me is that it's a particular few that are involved, whether it's with an elected official or a particular group, that seems to get the push. I think we need to blind ourselves to that fact, and we need to recognize that all artists have an opportunity to come to the table and to have their art either displayed or showcased, even if it's revolving and it's moving around the city. We need to provide that, and I would do that.
Thank you, Pilar. Misi Tagalua?
Art is very important to me. 18 years ago, I started a nonprofit called Tafesi La Fai, Pacific Islander. I looked around, and there was no clearinghouse for things Pacific Islander. So we started in our parking lot, and now we're into 18 years. And we've invited artists from different parts of the world to come in and showcase their Pacific Islander art. So that's important. And if you look at how Tafesi La Fai is funded, it's funded by a lot of people who are passionate about certain causes. But we give them free rein as to how they express that. And that's why we get a lot of volunteers. We're at the Acornia of the Pacific every year. We attract about 1,500 artists and volunteers to the event every year. So my point is, we need to figure out existing good nonprofits, and then give them a little push with the funds. If I'm on the council, I would definitely legislate that to be an important component of our budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Misi. And Lena Gonzalez?
I believe strongly in our arts community. I've worked personally with many local artists. We've actually employed and created jobs for local artists with our murals, utility boxes that have been painted over in the Wilmore neighborhood, North Pine with musicians. We've hired for our park openings, some local musicians, all local. I'm a strong believer in, in making sure that we also tie in with our, our great museums. We have MOLA, the Pacific Island Ethnic Art Museum, that's located within the first council district. Tying in with them, as well as our nonprofits, local artists, as well as some private, private foundations and private, private sources of funding. I think that's really important, to be able to provide more funding for the Blue Ribbon, for the Blue Ribbon Project. But I believe it's something that the first district has always led, led the efforts in, and I hope to continue that as the next council member in doing so.
Thank you, Lena. We'll move now to Tiffany Ryder. And this question will first go to Pilar Pinel.
Describe what you believe is the role of a council member in attracting and retaining business in his or her district and citywide.
The role of a council person is to outreach to their constituents, to look for the overall quality of living issues through policy, through legislation, to be the advocate on behalf of the voter, the registers, voters in the city. I would, I do that. I've been doing that all my life. It's about creating collaborations. It's about bringing all people together under, under an umbrella of common cause. It's advocating for, whether, again, education, because that's core at every community. It brings us together, because if we're not doing good in education, we're seeing it in, in youth and in the community. To support affordable housing. As a council person, I am that person, even in healthcare, as we talk about environment and particulates in the air. As your councilwoman, it is my responsibility to be your advocate and your voice. And I will be, I can assure you, the change you need and the voice you deserve.
Thank you, Pilar. Misi Tagalua?
I think the role of the council member is to manage these different self-interests. I think part of the charge that I'll be facing, if I'm elected as your council member, is to look at these competing self-interests and say, which one should we go with? You know, engage it against the best interest of the community long-term, and not political expediency. And I'll just be one of nine. So I need to also mitigate some of those self-interests between the different council districts. So I see that as, as my primary function and role on the city council. Historically, this particular district has looked at issues through the lenses of special interest groups. I'd like to change that, do something different.
Thank you, Misi. We'll go now to Lena Gonzalez.
Sure. And I'm sorry, can you repeat the question again? I, I, thank you.
Sure. Yeah, I just wanted to be clear on that. Describe what you believe is the role of a council member in attracting and retaining business in his or her district and citywide.
Sure. Well, the role of a council member, you know, we had Albertsons that went away. We actually kind of stepped out of our role, and were talking to our city manager to make sure that we were able to get some, a good tenant and speak to the, the city management there, and as well as the property management, so to make sure that we have a good tenant that went into Albertsons, that it wasn't something that wasn't good or a right fit for the district. But I believe, overall, the, the role of a council member really should be making sure that there's policies and incentives in place for businesses to come to the city. There has to be an incentive for them to understand that there is a role for them in downtown, or West Side, or the central neighborhoods. There's a platform, that there's also outreach done by the city to say, this is the place that you want to be, this is the place that you want to invest in, and we're going to help you and hold your hand through the process if need be. I think that's important, to put those policies in place. Citywide, I think management needs to take a, certainly a sharper role and a quicker look at what they're doing currently. We need to be very proactive. Albertsons was, was a certain, certainly a good, a good case of that.
Thank you, Lena. And Ricardo Linares, you'll get the last shot at this one.
Well, the role of the council member is to be the champion for his constituents, including the businesses in the, in the first district. So that's what I would do, work with the businesses and the constituents there, so that we can find a right fit. You know, for the last five years, I've worked with businesses up in North Long Beach, built a relationship with them, and they were able to create the first business improvement district up there in North Long Beach. That's the type of leadership that I'm going to bring down to the first district, making sure that they have the resources so that they can succeed in our, in our district, so that they can provide jobs to our residents. Because everything plays in one circle. If a business is successful, they're going to provide jobs to our local residents. Our local residents are going to be able to have money, pay for their bills, and then spend money here locally, which goes back to the businesses. So it's one circle. If we take care of each other, I think the first district's going to thrive. So that's what I'm going to do as the first district council member.
Thank you, Ricardo. All right, I get to wrap up here with the last of the questions for each of you. And it'll begin with the obvious fact that the budget limits what the city's government can accomplish in our community, in any community. How would you reach out to local nonprofits and look for their collaboration in providing needed services? We've already heard a little bit about this regarding development and the arts, but let's, let's see how you can respond. Misi Tagalua, you will be the first.
Yeah. A few years ago, when the IRS eliminated the nonprofits, they require additional filing. 30% of the nonprofits were eliminated in the country. And I suspect we took a hit as well. So there's a lot of nonprofits that are not even on the radar. They don't have their 501(c)(3). I will have an open-door policy. Well, I will proactively walk the community and invite these nonprofits to come out of the shadow. There's so many people doing very good things in our community, and as a council person, I would like to bring them on board and, and give them some, some tools and assistance. So that's one thing I would, I would do.
Thank you, Misi. Thank you. Lena Gonzalez?
Sure. We've actually worked plenty with our nonprofits. For instance, Centro Cha, which is a really good Latino organization, Latino-based organization, has worked on a lot of our parks programming. And so with parks being cut, we've had to, you know, supplement that somehow. And so we've reached out to our nonprofit partners, like Centro Cha, Centro Shalom, for not only parks programming, but also for homeless services, to make sure that, you know, if there's housing that's needed, or if there's a person that needs to, to move into a house, that there's, you know, kingdom causes is there. So there's a lot of opportunity for that, that we've seen. We've had to collaborate and be creative in, in how we're, how we're attacking and challenging, how we're tackling these issues. But I think it's very important to have that connection with our nonprofits. I would hope to continue that as a next council member. I think it's very important, especially with our budget and the way it's been going. And, and hopefully, I can continue that as the next council member.
Thank you, Lena. Ricardo Linares?
So one thing is to be proactive with our nonprofits. And Misi and Lena already touched on it, working with the, the local nonprofits that we have here to provide some of the activities that we, that we need, like parks, park activities, and maybe some housing. But reaching out to other nonprofits, like Habitat for Humanity, where I volunteer at, or US Vet Initiative, those agencies provide services here locally. So if we work all together, you know, to complement some of the budget cuts that we've, that we've had over several years, I think it's going to go a long way. You know, one thing we did last year was provide activities over the summer, and working with Long Beach CAP, Centro Cha, at several of our local parks. And if we can continue that, it'll help our budget, and we can provide sources in other areas with our budget.
Thank you, Ricardo. And lastly, for this round, Pilar Pinel?
Thank you. I understand that only too closely. As a nonprofit founder here in the city of Long Beach, 10 years ago, I found many challenges in, in not only starting the nonprofit here in the city, but I had to be creative, because as nonprofits, you are on a budget. And quite often, people feel that if you have a nonprofit, it's pretty lucrative. But it's, it's a very thin budget line that you're working from. So in that, my creativeness was to create partnerships, not to reinvent, but to create partnerships with our local unified school districts, with our community college district, and our local universities, Cal State Long Beach, Cal State Dominguez Hills, UCLA, and USC, as these are the nearest universities that most of my girls in the program would be going on to. I think it's important to be inclusive to all nonprofits that are in your district. Our girls provided a volunteer service, whether it was for beach cleanup, whether it was for the arts, whether it was for homeless. So it's important to be integrating all nonprofits, and I would do that.
Thank you, Pilar. In fact, thank you, all of you candidates. You've done an outstanding job, I think, so far. Also, thank you to our panelists. We will be closing this forum now by giving each candidate one more minute for a closing statement, beginning with Lena Gonzalez.
Thank you. Thank you again for having me here. Again, I really asked for your vote today. I have been the field deputy, the current field deputy for the first council district over the last five years. I know the direction our city is headed. I know the direction the first district is headed. I've worked with West Side Industrial Business Owners, artists in the East Village Artist District, business owners in downtown, whether you're low-income, high-income, I've represented you. And I'm hoping to get your support on April 8th. I'm a Cal State Long Beach graduate, graduated in 2009 with my degree in political science. I'm a mother. I'm also a person that has really enjoyed living, working, and playing in the downtown Long Beach area. I hope to get your support, and you can find a little bit more about me at lenagonzalez.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Lena. Ricardo Linares?
Well, like I said before, I've lived in the, in the first district for over 30 years. I grew up there. I went to school there. And now my wife and I are raising our two kids there, in the same neighborhood we grew up. If you combine my point... If you combine my opponent's experience, then you get one person, you get me. I've worked in nonprofits, I've worked as a field deputy for the City Council, I've worked, I've been the first district commissioner, but I've also served my country as a United States Marine for eight years. I've owned my own business, and for the last 30 years, I've been in the same neighborhood. I'm asking for your vote for the first district City Council member. I would love to hear from you. You can reach me through my website, ricardolinares.com. And again, remember, vote for Ricardo for his first district City Council member.
Thank you, Ricardo. Pilar Pinel?
Thank you. Again, I thank the panelists, I thank the guests here tonight, and I thank all of you viewing tonight. As your next councilwoman, I want to be the change you need and the voice you deserve. I've been in the city, again, 37 years, as we heard, but more importantly, I've worked on an array of different issues. I've worked on issues affecting our port line, coming down the LA River, as it relates to pollution. I've done that over 15 years. I understand those issues on the pollutants that are coming down our waterfronts. I understand the value of higher education. I have put over 350 young girls in the city of Long Beach through higher education through my nonprofit. And these are underserved, underprivileged young women. I understand small business, and I will be there to help you start up your small business. I understand the health issues that we are affronted with, given the environmental pipeline that we are, the corridor that we are connected to, and the drive of business that comes from the port. I am here for you, I have always been here for you, and I hope I will earn your vote, your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Pilar. Misi Tagalua, your closing statement.
Thank you, Matt. One of the reasons why I'm running for City Council is because I want safe communities. My wife has to be able to walk our dock at night and not accosted by folks that come into the community. In our district downtown, we get a lot of our fair share of people visiting the city. And so, it's very important to me that safety is there. And then, the second thing that, the reason why I'm running for City Council is I would like to make this community a better community. I feel we can do a lot better if we can just come together, invite all of our friends to come work together, and hopefully, we'll have a better Long Beach in the first district. Thank you, and I'd be honored to have your vote. Our website is misiforlongbeach.com, and my telephone number is 562-495-3600. Thank you.
Thank you, Misi. I think that the citizens of the first district have a tough choice ahead of them, and I do want to thank all of you for your really excellent work here this evening. And that does mark the end of this first district forum. But don't let the learning process stop here. The election is not until April 8th. You have many weeks to prepare yourself for the decision that you'll make when you step into a voting booth. On behalf of the Long Beach Community Action Partnership and PadNet, I'd like to thank, once again, our candidates, our panelists, and our great PadNet production crew, working behind the scenes here. We're very grateful to RD&amp;M Design and Marketing for their generous underwriting donation that helped make this program possible. For information about how you can become an underwriter of the forum series, please visit our elections page at padnet.tv. One more reminder that this forum will also be available as video-on-demand and will be replayed on Charter, Channel 32, and Verizon FiOS, Channel 41, throughout the election season. You'll find the video and broadcast schedule at padnet.tv. Stay tuned for our upcoming City Council Candidate Forums throughout February and March. We'll meet the candidates in City Council District 3 on Tuesday, February 12th, at 7:00 PM. Our second and final mayoral candidate forum will take place on April 2nd. That's just six days before Long Beach goes to the polls. Thanks for joining us and for caring about the great city of Long Beach. Good night.